Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please join me as I pray. Again, Father, we're thankful for the blessings of this new day. And it seems like with every new day, new challenges come before our world and our country and our state and our local governments. And it's also an opportunity, Lord, to trust in you. And so, Lord, we just pray this morning that these commissioners will listen to your voice, will trust in your guidance as they make decisions that affect this county. And it's like the man that once said, "Lord, we'll trust you to do what you said you can do, but if you don't, we will still trust you." And that's the attitude we need to approach some of these situations in life, that we still need to trust you even though it may be later before the resolution is before us. And we trust in you today. For it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Good morning, everyone. We do have a quorum, and we have some people that want to be heard. Ms. Stiles, please.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I just wanted to celebrate our 150th birthday. Aransas County will be 150 years old September 18th of 2021. So, we are going to start celebrating as of now. So, as of this coming Saturday, you are all invited to attend our kickoff celebration, and it's going to be one of many, at the History Center from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And we will have speakers, and our own judge will be there to speak. And we have some new artifacts that we want to introduce and show off, and especially our Copano Bay fishing pier, a good replica of it. So, anyway, we just want to invite you to that. And I hope you enjoy our sesquicentennial mug. We were very proud of them. And yes, so anyway, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Kane.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. The sales tax abatement you will consider will create a disadvantage to some property owners and create a governmental-induced advantage to property owners downtown. After we get past the popular idea of making art tax exempt, understand it will only apply in the cultural arts district downtown. If the owner of this shopping center has a potential tenant that wants to open any kind of business that will also carry art, this person will be more likely to rent a space downtown, knowing the product they sell will not be taxed in that downtown district. If you allow the special tax-free district, it will have a negative effect on property and businesses and business owners everywhere else in the county. They define original arts of work to allow copies of 250 prints, which doesn't sound true to the definition of original works of art. Any items that can be classified as art are plentiful. This will become a nightmare to control and track, especially since some shops sell online also. Second topic. I'm very disappointed we were in Week Six of vaccinations after months of discussion, and the county was not prepared at all on how to deal with a life safety issue vaccination. It's one thing to not be prepared, but it's worse to misappropriate a taxpayer-paid-for-life-safety vaccine. Texas, a part of state health services, is clear in a directive on who can get the vaccine now. Frontline healthcare workers in residence at long-term facilities called Phase 1A, plus people over 65 with a chronic medical condition that puts them at an increased risk for severe illness with COVID-19 called Phase 1B. By these state guidelines, these are the only citizens eligible to receive the vaccine until further notice. That directive from the state, DSHS, is not complicated or ambiguous. Instead, Judge Mills had a secretary call, Keith Barrett, the Nav District, and advised he had 25 doses set aside for the entire staff of the Nav District, and ultimately the Nav District's Commissioners, ignoring the clear state directive on how to properly administer the vaccines to 1A and 1B citizens only. Understand, the city of Rockport got doses for their entire staff in council, despite the fact that the City Hall's been closed to the public for ongoing a year and not being all qualified. The unofficial list was rumored to be circulated by the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Volunteers rumor league called people randomly as well and got them on the list. Friends of connected friends got the call. Heck, Judge Mills set off and knocked on at least one door of my neighbor and invited that family to get in line. Tents were set up. 300 people got doses, and not one announcement was made to the general public. Just a select, kind of like a Sinners list. After the public saw this, and only after outrage and questions arose the day after, the special 300, did we hear about a way to sign up for vaccines for the regular citizens that truly qualify to state guidelines as 1A and 1B. This weekend's newspaper claimed that this was just a trial, a test of Aransas County's ability to successfully hold a COVID-19 vaccine drive-through event, excuse me. Also, staff members of Public Health Region 11 were present to monitor how the event proceeded. So, let's grade how the test went. A test would be 25 vaccinations, not the whole lot of 300. No announcement was made to the public. The county had no public sign-up list started. Staff, employees, and friends of local governments were vaccinated. They did not meet the simple qualification being 1A and 1B. I would say it's a failure. I hope Aransas County's failure in abuse doesn't prevent additional dosage from coming to our citizens. As of today, we have not heard of more coming. Judge Mills, the citizens that pay your salary deserve an honest, transparent, and capable leader, especially during this health crisis. You have proven to not be any of those, in my opinion. Instead, you used insider information to gain access to a public-paid, scarce life-safety vaccine and abused it, maybe illegally. Judge Mills, you have abused the power entrusted in you and violated public trust. I ask for your resignation. I ask the county attorney to look into this further and determine if any laws were broken. The everyday citizens of Aransas County have a right to not be continually bypassed by the people of power and influence in this county.
Thank you. Ms. Rutledge, I believe you're online. Do you want to speak now or when the items come up? Okay, I'll take that.
Hi, Judge.
You want to speak at each agenda item, or do you want to speak now?
One moment.
Pardon me?
I'm fine with speaking. I'm fine with speaking now.
Okay.
Except for item number 18, the Economic Development Administration grant. I'm getting an echo. Are you hearing that?
Yes.
I can hear a little bit.
I wish I could solve that. I'd like to speak on item 18 when that item comes up. Would that be okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, on item number 11 and 12, I'd like to speak now, if you can hear me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on the sales tax exemption for Rockport Cultural Arts District, this sets up a situation of winners and losers in our county, where one kind of business in one location is favored over the other. There's at least one art company in the same shopping center that you're in. With this sales tax exemption, they would be favored, they would not be favored over the art businesses in downtown. This sets up an unfair advantage, and I'm sure that this artist that rents in the shopping center where you're located would feel disadvantaged and unappreciated by the county. It's not necessary to offer sales tax exemptions in order for someone to purchase art. If they're going to buy art, they're going to buy it. We do not need to create more government by rules like this or legislation, which I understand this is the intent, is for the county and the city to pass a sales tax exemption for the Cultural Arts District, just so that they can have a push for state legislation. We need to be making government smaller, not bigger. I firmly oppose any new legislation for sales tax exemption, and I'm asking all Commissioners to oppose item number 11. Let's make sure business is fair for all in Rockport, that this is a place where all entrepreneurs can thrive and have, through the free market, their ability to flourish in our community. Item number 12 and item number 11, there's no agenda packet, no transparency. Have your commissioners been able to read all of the information on items number 11 and 12? Have the public had an opportunity to review this in order to have time to speak with their commissioners about anything on this agenda for this meeting? I request that you delay item number 12 and take it off of the consent agenda until you have a chance to show us all and the Commissioners what was actually spent in the hot tax funds for the Rockport Fulton Chamber of Commerce. We had a situation this year or last year where the Chamber of Commerce was engaged in a pact, to create a pact against the citizens on the election, the bond election. And this was done by the county. And I think the public and the Commissioners have a right to know how our hot tax funds are being spent, not just a spreadsheet. We need detail, and we need that to be provided ahead of the meeting, ahead of the vote. Transparency is a good thing in your community. It's a part of responsible government. So, I'm asking that item number 12 be pulled from the consent agenda until all documents can be reviewed. Taxpayer-funded lobbying is very distasteful. There is currently legislation pending in the state level to ban this practice. It's unethical, and we don't think that hot funds should be mingled in any way, shape, or form for taxpayer-funded lobbying for the Chamber of Commerce or any other group. And so, I appreciate that this item be looked into further detail so that you know exactly how your hot tax funds were spent. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Going to the consent agenda item, we have seven items on there, and item number 12 is not. I didn't get it listed. Sorry. Richard Smith.
Thank you, Judge, and Commissioners, for allowing me to speak.
Yeah.
I'm a permanent resident of Rockport, and my concern is the vaccination and how it's announced. I want to say that vaccination, a pause and pause, went really smoothly. I was really impressed at how well it, you know, went through. However, we heard about it by word of mouth, and we didn't hear about the one at Walgreens or the one at Family Planning Center, but we did hear about this one. My question is, what are we going to do to announce the next one? How about the people that have already had their first shot? What are they going to do about getting their second shot? We just got to get it by word of mouth? You know, that's not the way it should be done. And the time is ticking on the people at the Family Planning Center and Walgreens, where they have to do, keep every morning checking their website to see if it's available. And let me tell you, that's a real process to do. And there are a lot of senior citizens living in Aransas County. Not all of them are savvy when it comes to doing that type of thing. So, my question to you all is, is Aransas County going to step forward and try to do something different? I'm just curious, and that's just really all I want to know, is what are you guys going to do, you know, for the people out here that pay your salaries and everything? So, but I want to thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Patel. Ken Patel. You see? Okay, then that, I believe, is it.
No, not. I mean, I haven't checked in the last hour, but no.
All right. Consent agenda, we have seven items.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made. Commissioner Cashline, I have a second.
I second the motion.
Second, Commissioner Russo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that a aye or?
Aye here. I didn't say it, but I meant.
Unanimous. Discuss, approve, disapprove. Quarterly report, Maritime Museum.
Morning, Judge Mills. Commissioner, Mr. Cheney is not here today?
No.
Okay. Mr. Capeline, and welcome, Ms. Russo.
Thank you.
Thank you all for having me. Judge Mills, this time I brought a stopwatch. Okay, well, to start off, last time I told you I'd begin each presentation with a Texas maritime fact. If you guys could go to the next page, or is this something under my control? Oh, there we go. All right. Our recent New Year's marks the 158th anniversary of the Battle of Galveston. Starting at 3:00 a.m. in the morning, Confederate forces would make a sneak attack on Galveston and retake it by land and sea. Union losses were high, including the capture of USS Harriet Lane that you see on the right by the CSS Bayou City, and the destruction of Commodore Renshaw's flagship USS Westfield, along with Commodore Renshaw and numerous of his men who went down with the ship. Texas would remain in Confederate hands throughout the duration of the war. So, again, this is the 158th anniversary of that battle and a significant event in the Civil War. Texas would never again be challenged truly by the Union. So, to business, since I met you guys last time, I've been quite busy preparing. Flip the switch on the side. I see it. That's what you were trying to tell me the first time. There we go. Since I met you last time, I've been quite busy preparing the museum for a major renovation, something that I promised I would discuss with you at this next meeting. There have been a lot of positive changes that I believe will make the museum a major destination point along the coastal bend. But before I discuss that, I'd like to go into some of our general numbers, just to kind of give you an idea of where we are this year, or from the past year, I should say. As to be expected, the numbers for the fourth quarter are down compared to a normal year, but not nearly as bad as we expected or obviously saw in the spring quarter, I'm sorry, in the spring and summer. The cancellation of our Bell Ball Festival in December partially affected our out-of-town numbers and some of our inertown numbers. But we tried to move it to February. We decided it would be safest to cancel that event as well. We hope to make up with that with the Wine Festival that we are now actively planning for a major fundraising event for the center of the year, as well as the patron party. So, the total loss of attendance between October and December was 31%. Not really that bad if you compare it to previous years, but it was 65% for the whole year. That was bad. So, but now that people are getting vaccinated, we are starting to, and state restrictions are being reduced, we are starting to see, we are starting to see an uptick in visitors, especially out of state, which are mostly winter Texans on vacation and traveling within the state. So, we are getting a few international visitors, but we're getting a lot of out-of-state visitors as well that are just here on vacation, traveling. Some of them are traveling by camper, which doesn't help us with the hotel motel, but a lot of them are coming in to stay at hotels, to my understanding. We ask them when they come in. Like our general attendance, the fourth quarter has not been hit as bad as earlier in the year for people traveling 70-plus miles out of Rockport. This is likely because everyone is getting ready to get out and travel for attendance 70-plus miles out of Rockport in the fourth quarter. The total loss of attendance, again, was, well, actually I didn't say this number, but was 34% and 18% for the whole year. That's, that was considerably a lot better than I expected. That being said, due to COVID-19, the museum attendance in 2020 has been abysmal, and then at its all-time low, even lower than during post-Harvey closure and reconstruction. This has resulted in a 30% difference between Hurricane Harvey rebuilding closure and with COVID-19. So, to kind of give you a general idea of the numbers, these are our general visitation records between the years. If you look at the cancellation of, this is kind of a hard one to read, I probably shouldn't have put this one up, but the cancellation of our educational events and temporary hiring freeze of an educational director has been part of this. We haven't had C-Camp, and there's been very little homeschooling. But on a more positive note, after joining with Halloween in the District Group, thank you, Mistake, and, you know, turning the museum into a haunt and joining with other nonprofits, we got to see over 300 people one day. It was pretty fantastic. So, we are getting an uptick in visitors on different events. This spreadsheet, I know it's hard to see, but it just shows that most of our events have been canceled, but we are planning to aggressively start reintroducing these in mid-2021, when we hire a new educational director, and as we start going into more of our fundraising campaigns. So, also, we expect that in terms of our expenditures, they will go up. We have not spent much. If you look at these numbers, you can see for curatorial exhibits and education, there's been very minimal spending, but then in the last fourth quarter, it jumped up to $1,000 in curatorial and then 790 for, I'm sorry, 325 for education. And the reason for that is because of the new renovation and campaign that I'm launching to try to bring the museum into a true destination point for the coastal bend. So, if you, if we go into the new campaign, this will give you something much more positive to look at. As I mentioned last time, we're not just spinning our wheels during this downtime. Yes, we're losing people coming in. We're losing financial assets, but we hope to rebuild those in 2021. If we can't have all of our fundraisers, then we're going to make this museum something incredible to bring people in from 70 miles plus out, and also massively advertise what we're doing to the museum to make this exciting. So, as for the new campaign, and each of your boxes should be a PDF campaign packet that you can read at your leisure. So, it'll explain in very detail what I started to bring up last time. I'm not going to give you all the details. Otherwise, I will definitely run over my time. And, but it will answer most of your questions on what I'm doing with the museum, what the vision is, where I'm going, how I'm doing it, who I'm partnering with, and where a lot of our fundraising is going to be coming from. So, again, the most important thing to consider is how the museum has been effectively spending our time and resources during this downtime museum attendance. So, one of my main goals for this museum, and you don't have to read all of this, this is all going to be in your campaign packet, one of the main goals for this is to become a cornerstone for the community and to stimulate economic growth and development and vitality by revitalizing the museum to bring more people to Rockport, which, again, will support local businesses and other nonprofits. As stated earlier, these positive changes will start this, oh, actually, we've already started. We actually got a head start, started much earlier. The goals are to promote tourism through increased entractions, which will be the renovation of the museum, and also improving our educational impact and maintaining and improving upon the American Alliance of Museums. They told us they had certain things that they wanted us to do. We are doing them. And we are also embracing technology. This will ensure that we can have a reaccreditation in another 10 years. To kind of give you a quick breakdown of what we are doing, now, last time I showed you some examples, kind of some before and afters of what we're planning for the museum, all of what I showed you was photoshopped into locations that we currently have. Well, all the artwork for those locations has been completed. So, if you look at a current map of the museum, for 20-plus years, the main part of the museum has been very focused on the La Belle exhibit. In reality is, that time has passed. If you want to see the La Belle exhibit, you're going to go to the Bob Bullock Museum. So, we needed to diversify our exhibits and make it something to where it's unique, to where people have to come here to see it. They can't go anywhere else. And right now, we're on the Odyssey Trail for the Belle exhibit, so it goes to all those smaller museums. That's not making us unique whatsoever. So, we're going to go ahead and we're going to revitalize and reutilize the space, condense the Belle exhibit, and do what the accreditation board said. One of the main things they said was they wanted diversity. We're going to start by massively expanding our Karankaua exhibit, which ties into local history all along the coast, as well as Spanish exploration, the 1554 wrecks, which are some of the most important wrecks that ever have taken place, the Spanish galleons that wrecked off of Padre Island, also going into the Texas Navy. So, we're, you know, even though we have a small museum, we have plenty of space that just needs to be optimized. This will also go into the upstairs. This is the current plan. You can see that big empty void to the left. That is going to become one of the largest Civil War exhibits in the state. That, I'm working with the United States Navy to bring in various artifacts from different wrecks up and down our coast, and those artifacts are already coming in. So, to give you an idea, this is a before of one of the walls, as a photoshopped image, to see what's already under construction. This is what it's going to turn into. All of these exhibits are going to be very interactive, and we're bringing in different artifacts from repositories across the state, such as Corpus Christi, Austin, Dallas, Fort Worth, and, you know, something, it's going to be interactive, not just for adults, but kids alike. For instance, that Karankaua WikiUp or hut, that is something that kids will actually be able to go up to. Every single display will have a digital stand that you can go up to and interact with. It'll be very easy, just like your phone. You can go up, type a button, change the language, listen to the audio on the phone. You don't have to just read boring black and white text on the wall. For example, if you go to the next one, we've, well, this is actually the Karankaua hut that we built on Wednesday. We've, like I said, we're already well under construction. Now, I'm going around getting skins from all over the community and the state to cover this thing, to make this more accurate. This is also under the supervision of Pat Stranahan, who's been helping me to make sure this is historically accurate. So, this is the Cabasa de Vaca exhibit minus one model. It's very 1980s, very 1990s, black and white text on the wall. My goal is to spice this up, as I said, make it much more interactive, much more artwork, artifacts, very pretty and visually stunning to look at. This is something that people will appreciate. So, then I showed this to you guys last time. This is an older part of the Belle exhibit that is underutilized space. We're going to be changing this and turning it into the 1554 wrecks, which I believe to be the most important wrecks in the state. We'll be bringing in large Lombard cannons and swivel cannons from Corpus Christi, and most of the other artifacts, such as the Silver Royals and the Blooms that were recovered from these treasure wrecks, and telling the whole story. So, this is actually an outdated pre-concept image. We're actually building full-scale carriages from the 1550s to install these into. So, again, this is going to be very exciting to the public and something that you can only see in very rare places. These artifacts don't These artifacts don't exist anymore unless you're in Spain. There's very few of them. There are one or two of these cannon that are still down in Corpus Christi, but in reality, most of them are in storage. And if you want to hear the full story, you can come to us and get a synopsis of the entire storyline of Texas. So moving into inner more interactive, um, what are we on? We're on 26, okay. So to bring people in, we're actually creating a full-scale mock-up of a square sailing sail. This again is a photoshopped image that shows what is to come. This is fully interactive. Kids will be coming from all over the state in bus rides. We've already got Texas A&amp;M University, UT, and other institutions that want to come here to teach their students on how to sail a square rigger. Every single line will work on this under the supervision of an adult, and people will be able to manipulate this, lower this yardarm down, trim the sail and learn how a square rail ship, a square sail ship worked within the 17th, 18th, and 19th centuries. This is already well underway. It's a 16-foot yardarm on the left, a fife rail that goes around the mast that will contain all the lines, a mainsole that will go up and down. So again, we're being extremely interactive to make this happen. This is a deal I've been working on since 2015. I never thought it would end up at the Texas Maritime Museum, but I was blessed to get this position. This is the Texas Navy warship Zavala, the only ship that has been, a Texas Navy warship that has been identified in the state. I recovered the remains in 2015 with the assistance of the Army Corps of Engineers, the United States Navy, Texas Historical Commission, and Gray and Pape. Those artifacts, in the last few months, I recently had delivered to the Texas Maritime Museum. These are the oldest steam boiler remnants discovered in the United States. Now, this is an exhibit I did in Texas City. You can see in the middle, what I generally do is I take a skeleton frame and I rebuild what was missing, and then I put the artifacts back into context. It's going to be extremely mind-boggling to see. I hate to use this as a context, but it's kind of like when Challenger went down, they had to rebuild it in a hangar, put a skeletal frame, and put all the pieces back into context. That's what we're doing at the Texas Maritime Museum. You're not going to get to see this in many other museums around Texas. So this is going to be an exceptional draw. We are working with the Texas Navy Association and about 20 other organizations to make this a massive event. The email burst is going out to about 20,000 people, about 10,000 within the state and 10,000 without, and it's going to be a huge event. So again, I tried to keep this on time, so in case you guys had questions. But again, last time I told you we were starting this massive campaign, we've been very successful in raising operational funds to do this. I, my goal initially was $50,000. With the assistance of the Texas Navy Association, the Galveston Port Authority, and numerous others, I've already raised over 30,000. The problem we're having issues with is operational funds. That's not as interesting to grant, granting operations outside of the norms. So that's where hot funds really comes in to help us. We don't really want to spend as much out of hot funds on curatorial and education when I can get that through outside grants. But we are moving, we are building, and the renovation is happening quickly. I expect the first phase to be completed by summer, the second phase to be completed by fall, and this will continue into early 2022. So all of that will be explained in your packet. Again, you don't, you can just read it at your leisure. It's about a 30-page packet, so I don't want to overwhelm you. But by the time this is done, this will be a new museum. So thank you, guys, for your continued time and support. I really appreciate everything you guys do for the Texas Maritime Museum. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. It sounds very exciting, uh, what you've got going down there, and I appreciate all the hard work. Thank you.
You're going to like this when it's finished.
Well, it looks like I need to come down and take a look.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Before we go on to the next item, I did have an email waiting for me. I just didn't see it from Kathy Kane, who was unable to join us this morning. She asked if I could read her message into the record. Part of it has to do with the vaccine.
I move to approve the fourth quarter 2020 report for the Maritime Museum is given, and kudos to Justin Parkoff for the amazing things he's doing at that museum. I have been there. I've seen some of them under construction, and it is overwhelming.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Castline. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Part of Ms. Kane's message was about the vaccine event, and the other part was about the tax. So I presume, I propose to put the tax part when we get to that part of the agenda, but may I read in a brief paragraph about the vaccines issue?
Well, I think we can wait until we get to the report at the end.
Okay.
All right. Discuss, approve, disapprove, fourth quarter 2020 report, Historical Commission. Ms. Styles, again, come on up.
I want to go on record that this is the Aransas County Historical Commission report.
Oh, yeah.
I don't represent the state. As you know, we are allocated $10,000 to support our historical needs. And if you'll notice in your packet, I overspent by 76 cents over budget.
Right. I'll be looking for that.
Does anybody have any questions on the 2020 financials for this commission?
Oh, ma'am, again, I appreciate everything that you and your commission do for the Aransas County.
Thank you so much.
I have a motion.
I move to approve the fourth quarter 2020 report from the Aransas County Historical Commission is given.
Motion made. Have a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Castline. All those in favor?
Aye. May I just note one thing? When we received the slate of commission members, your name was on there twice. So I wonder if someone else was left off? You might just check it.
Oh, it is on there twice.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right.
Because you do twice as much?
No. I didn't, no, there's, everybody's on it that's supposed to be on.
Okay, thank you.
And that was the next agenda item, right?
You've been cloned or something?
I was cloned. Any questions?
No, thank you. I believe motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number 10, discuss, approve, disapprove, changes in 2021 appointments for the Aransas County Historical Commission.
I move to approve the changes to the 2021 appointments for the Aransas County Historical Commission.
Motion made. The second, Commissioner Castline. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 11, discuss, approve, disapprove, sales tax exemption for the Rockport Cultural Arts District. I have a motion.
Hello, Judge and Commissioners.
Can I discuss it till I get a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Do I have a motion? Well, I'll make the motion to discuss or make the motion to for the approved or disapproved the sales taxes exemption initiative to the Rockport Cultural Arts District.
Well, I don't think we can have a motion to approve or disapprove. You'll probably have to choose one.
Well, in that case, I'll just make a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Okay. Lack of a second, motion dies. You want to discuss it?
I would like to present, yes.
Okay.
Can we discuss it if there's not a motion pending? I thought that was the...
I don't know. Can we?
I don't think we're supposed to. I, I have tried to get things discussed before and have not been allowed to because I could not get a motion seconded.
I'm asking the attorney. I'm not asking you.
If it dies for lack of a second, we're not supposed to discuss it. It's not a live motion.
It didn't get a second.
Somebody makes a new motion, and it's to disapprove.
I'll move to dis, I'll move to disapprove the agenda.
Have a second.
I second it.
All right, now we can discuss.
Okay, thank you. I'm Jennifer Day, Executive Director of the Rockport Cultural Arts District. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. The Rockport Cultural Arts District was designated by the State of Texas, specifically the Texas Commission on the Arts in 2016. It was the first cultural arts district designated on the coastal bend. Aransas County, the city of Rockport, and Aransas County Navigation District provided 10-year resolutions of support to Arcad as a part of the state application. CADs are recognized as walkable areas of significant cultural landmarks and resources that generate economic development and community revitalization. CADs draw tourists and their dollars to boost economic activity.
See.
Are we on now?
Not quite.
Colin, are we ready?
Let me see if I can get the people at home to confirm they can hear us. Let me check and see if somebody will confirm audio. Okay, I get an audio confirmation.
So may I continue?
All right. I'm sorry for the interruption. We had a little technical problems. Go ahead.
Cultural arts districts are the vehicle that provides state funding to qualified nonprofits simply because they exist within the Arcad footprint. For example, the Rockport Center for the Arts has received several state CAD grants, the last of which was for $45,000 to support the 2021 Art Festival. And now Rockport Little Theater will also be eligible. State funding further maximizes local hot funding allocations. A 2006 Texas Cultural Trust Commission study of four cultural districts who received a total of 670,000 in public grant funding from the TCA revealed an overall economic impact of 21.3 million. The Arcad footprint, which is shown here, is 44 city blocks. And within that footprint, and this is not a comprehensive list, the State of Texas Maritime Museum, the impending Civic Complex and Celebration Square, the impending Center for the Arts Complex, the festival grounds, historic downtown Rockport, the beach park, and Rockport Harbor, public art, including sculptures and murals, artist studios where artists created, artist galleries where artists sold, the winery by the bay and Doggone Brewery, 20 state historical markers and other significant historical sites, the waterfront, which includes the impending AC&amp;D and Bass Family Development, all within those 44 blocks. And again, that's not a comprehensive list. Events held include opportunities for artists to sell their work through the festival grounds, downtown merchants, galleries, restaurants, the monthly makers markets, sidewalk sales, and street vendor events. And I do want to point out that, because it was a reference to an artist within the same shopping complex who has art for sale in restaurants within the cultural arts district, any artist can sell and bring in... any artist can sell and bring in art to sell within the cultural arts district, and there are many venues for them to do that. So if we can get started with the slides, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Colin, I guess I can do that, right? There we go. Okay. If you could scroll to the next one, please. So these next few slides, this is a study that was done by TXP for the Texas Cultural Districts Program specifically for the Texas Cultural Trust and the Texas Commission on the Arts. And it recognized certain measurements and indicators for success of cultural arts districts. If you can scroll to the... I'm sorry, leave it right there. One of the ones that I've highlighted here, and this is the one I'm going to focus on, is developing specific state and local tax revenue funding mechanisms. If you could go to the next one, please. I think we lost one. How about going back one? Well, what's not coming up there, Colin, is one that talks about sales tax credits or exemptions for original, one-of-a-kind works of art produced or sold within the district. And these are incentive strategies for cultural arts districts. Okay. If you can go up to one more, another, 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 one more. Okay, one more. Okay, one more. Here we go. Okay, so this is ARCAD's proposal, ARCAD being the Rockport Cultural Arts District acronym, to generate a bracketed bill only for ARCAD. And I reference House Bill 1494 here that was passed September 1st of 2017. The significance of that House bill, which was championed by Jeanne Morrison, is the hotel motel tax allocation for Rockport only of up to 30% of hot tax allocation to the arts. We are the only place in the state of Texas that has that. All other entities are 15% with the exception of Houston, and that is 19%. So my point here, it has been done before and it can be done again. I also referenced State of Louisiana Cultural Districts Sales Tax Exemption Program. Colin, if you could go to the next one. So I've spent quite a bit of time with Kelsey McCrery. She reports to the Lieutenant Governor in Louisiana. She's the Director of Civic Design and Cultural Districts, the Office of Cultural Development, the Department of Culture, Recreation, and Tourism. In Louisiana, there are 115 cultural arts districts. In the state of Texas, there are 46. When you become a cultural arts district in the state of Louisiana, this sales tax exemption is an automatic thing when you become designated. In the state of Texas, it does not exist within cultural arts districts. So in working with her and looking at how they manage their sales tax exemptions on original, one-of-a-kind pieces of art sold within their districts, just looking at statistics of the districts, nearly 8.5 million of original art sales have occurred, excuse me, of original art sales have been tax exempt of 166 million art sales. So 8.5 million tax exempt of 166 million art sales. There have been 232 net new businesses of growth during that time. So let's go to the next slide. So all sellers must verify the authenticity of the original works of art and document each tax-exempt sale of qualifying art. They're already filing their sales tax reports. An option on their sales tax reports is to report exempted items. So the mechanism's already there. It is their responsibility to file their tax returns and report correctly. Now Louisiana does have specifics around what is considered an original piece of art, and I want to talk about that for a minute because I heard something earlier that was incorrect. So to give you an idea, visual arts and crafts, including but not limited to drawings, paintings, sculptures, clay, ceramics, fiberglass, leather, metal, paper, wood, installation art, light sculpture, wearable art, or mixed media, limited edition numbered handmade prints up to 100, not 250, which you heard earlier, of lithographs, photography, silk screen, etching, and graphic design. That is what the state of Louisiana uses as their guideline, and that is what I'd propose we would do the same. Ineligible media or products include performing arts, food products, live plants such as bonsai trees, floral arrangements, wreaths and garlands, music recordings, and reproductions of original art, including gla...glaciers, I'm sorry. Okay. Colin, can you go to the next one, please? Okay, so this is the actual certification that the seller would complete. This is the information they would complete when they sell an original piece of art. Okay, let's go to the next one. So this is an example of the impact from a monetary standpoint for both the state, the city, and the county. So I ask the Center for the Arts to provide their total sales tax numbers for collected in 2016 and 2019, and broke it down, 6.25 for the state, 1% for the city, and 1% for the county. For those two years, the impact of the county would be $1,324.98, same as the city. Okay, Colin, if you'll go to the next one. So I have talked to Gary Gibbs, who is the Executive Director of the Texas Commission on the Arts, and he has communicated with me that I could pursue a carve-out of Rockport Cultural Arts District through this next legislative session. I've talked to the city of Rockport, the mayor, the city manager, and the city council. The city council unanimously approved their support of this initiative. I've talked to Judge Mills, and I've talked to each county commissioner, local businesses. I have a... I have several pages of businesses, restaurants, including hotels. Jatine Bakka was a very important one to get. He hands down approves its initiative. He can certainly see the influx of artists coming into this area as well as art collectors. And I will tell you this, I championed a art collection, excuse me, an art auction for a fundraiser for a project we're working on with Steve Russell Sculptures. And I did an online art auction, never done it before, and I called several people. One of them was Pam Hart, who's the wife of the Corpus Christi Caller Times owner. She is a huge art collector. And as we talked about what, from her perspective, what she looks at in art from an art auction online, one of the last questions she asked me was, Jennifer, do I have to pay sales tax on this? I will tell you, it's a big bonus if I do not. So I need you to consider that from a standpoint of selling art. I also got local artists to sign and show their support of this initiative. If you go to the next one, please. I've spoken to Jeanne Morrison's Chief of Staff, Shane Saum, and his... He is very supportive. He said, "Secure local support," which is why I'm here today, to secure the Aransas County support of this initiative. It's been supported by artists, by businesses, by the city of Rockport, and I need to secure your support in order to take this next step to the legislation. There is time to write, plenty of time to write a bill for the 87th legislative session, and then I'll need to take it to Lois Kohlhurst. Colin, would you take it to the next one, please? Okay, so I think we all know that the legislative session is in process until the end of May. If you'll take it to the next one. Almost finished. There we go. So disaster recovery. Aransas County, city of Rockport, town of Fulton, continue to require opportunities to stimulate recovery efforts and area growth as a result of Hurricane Harvey and the pandemic. I want to make a point here about why Louisiana started this initiative with cultural arts districts and the sales tax exemption. They also focus on historic preservation, which is one of our goals as well. It's not why I'm here today. They put this in place after Hurricane Katrina as a means to stimulate and revitalize their communities, and they have seen tremendous growth and initiative and the soft part of being involved in your community and building up your community. We're in that same situation. We're still recovering from Harvey, as we all know. And I just think that it's quite a parallel that we're pursuing this similarly to what they did. Colin, one more, please. Okay, so additional benefits promoting Rockport as the state epicenter for art collectors. This would be the only cultural arts district in the state of Texas that would offer this opportunity. That's not to say two years from now there may not be others that would go to the legislature. It also serves as a magnet for attracting artists across all mediums. And the last slide, please. So to say that we are favoring businesses is not the true story here. Every artist has an opportunity to sell art within the cultural arts district, whether it's through their existing means, which they're doing already, of artists outside of the district, or whether they come in and they have a vendor table at the festival grounds, or at the Makers Mark, which is held every month. The opportunities are there. So what I'm going to ask for you, if you would, to support this initiative, I do want to let you know that I also reached out to Jackie Cochran and to Amanda, and to see if y'all had any input as well.
We looked over your proposal, and I didn't have any questions. I think that you were very clear and that you did very good research putting this together for the Commissioners' Court today.
Thank you.
I also didn't have any questions on the discussion that we had.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and that's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Further discussion?
I would like to say a little... Sorry, Wendy, did you want to go?
Well, this is the time I would like to read the statement I got from one of my constituents who wanted to speak on this issue. Okay, let's see, hold on, let me switch screens. Kathy Kane states, "I'm not in favor of the proposed tax abatement. Any program that favors one business over the other is not something that I support for this community. The purpose of these types of abatements is to encourage economic development. A percent savings from sales tax isn't spurring development or encouraging other artists to sell their art in our county. This abatement doesn't make sense and penalizes artists who have their galleries outside the arts district." And I'll just add my own statement. I've been discussing this on Facebook all weekend. I got unanimous opposition with possibly one or two comments that you could interpret as neutral or favorable, but dozens of people pretty much echoed Kathy Kane's statement. And I want to say, it's not... None of us is trying to make the point that we have anything against the art districts at all, or against the art community here, or arts in general. The point is, we would like to find ways to help them that don't involve gerrymandering the tax laws. This is just not the right tool to use. We shouldn't be playing around with the taxes in a way as to favor some activities and not favoring others. If we want to make business easier here, it's lower taxes for everybody, not just for some.
All right. I am an art collector. Anyone who's visited my home is aware of that. My husband and I have been collecting art for over 30 years. We have traveled to New York. We've gone to Spain. We have bought art in California, New York, Illinois, many large cities within Texas, and many of the local artists and regional artists. I used to be a member of the Collectors Club of the Art Museum of South Texas, and we intentionally went to places to view galleries, to view collections, and to purchase art, which many of us did. I have visited with many friends who are art collectors, certainly significantly more expensive pieces perhaps than I have in my collection. No one was in favor of this. No one even understood the implication of this, notwithstanding the wife of the publisher of the Caller Times asking about sales tax. No one is concerned about sales tax when they're buying a piece of art that I spoke with, and that would include myself. I spoke with a few artists here since I received the agenda, and I've also spoken with some downtown business owners. I have not heard anything positive to support this initiative, and based on that, I would disapprove this. Thank you.
Further discussion? If not, we have a motion in a second to disapprove this initiative. Do I have a vote?
On the understanding that an "aye" means no to the proposal.
Right.
My vote is aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three, four, and one against.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 12, discuss, approve, disapprove quarterly hot fund report from Rockport-Fulton Chamber of Commerce.
Thanks.
Wasn't this... I said, "Take off consent agenda." It wasn't on consent agenda, so go ahead.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We're here to present you with the county quarterly report. Just to retract just a little bit, we're appreciative to Commissioner Castroline for attending the meetings we meet every other month. And at the beginning of the year, which is in March, we have a marketing workshop where we go through the detail of this. So that's why we're bringing you overviews as Commissioner Castroline is your representative, and he does go through the details of all of this, if anyone is interested in that. I would love for more people to serve on that council that prepares and does this all year long. Just get with Sandy Jumper on that. Okay, first slide. Do I flip that? All right, this is an overall look of the venue tax, which is the 2%. And Alma Cartwright puts this together, and your far-right column is the 2020 year. Look at it. It's $507,000. That's the first time in the history of the collection of the tax that it's reached a half million for a year. So who would have thought in a COVID year that it would reach that? But it's definitely an indicator. And Commissioner Castroline, we talked about this at our meeting, that it's the rentals. It's not the hotels, but it's the rentals. There's Alma. And a lot of it is due to Alma and her staff policing that or enforcing that with the rentals. And then scoot back to the 2017 year with Harvey, and then look at the previous year to that. We're 10% over pre-Harvey numbers, so 30% over last year and 10% over pre-Harvey numbers. So I think that's a definite indicator of the revitalization of tourism with the COVID activity, and we're grateful. activity, and we're grateful that we do have tourism spending in our community. And it looks like they're going to the rental properties that are tucked away, hopefully, and protected and safe and healthy for everyone. Now, if you look for the next slide, for our strategy for October, November, December, so this is looking back. We did a lot of Facebook posts, and this is on the main Facebook page titled "Visit Rockport Fulton." We did a lot with the "Go Texas" responses and the "Tour Texas" responses. These are people enlisting information from the state of Texas specifically on our community. And then we're pleased to get the USA Today Logo Award for Best Small Coastal Town and utilizing that logo throughout where we could, and press releases and et cetera. And then we have the digital marketing, which is San Antonio, Houston, Austin. We focused on social ads, mobile geo-fence, geo-following, and next-generation behavioral targeting. So this is where we are on mobile devices, and we're serving up ads to people according to the research. In other words, the research is telling us who should, we should be advertising, and then we're advertising to that. And then I'd like to mention, we refocused our attention on communicating an outdoors message. So the activities that we would show on Facebook wouldn't be indoor activities. They're all outdoors, where there's air and trails and walking and hiking and sports on the water and things like that, and that seems to be working. Focused on Facebook accounts to promote the small businesses as they would come to our community to try to help. And then we did a press release on "Take It to the Outdoors," and this is getting traction, showing all of these properties available with a photo and trying to market that. Sandy redid the 100 Things to Do. Previously, it had been 51 things to do, and that's getting some traction as we market that through the community. And then we turned in our Bird City application. And I'm going to let Sandy talk for just a little bit.
As you're all pretty much aware, I'm sure, let me take this mask off because I can't hear myself. I'm sure you can't hear me. We did the Christmas on the beach. We were looking for an outside activity that would not only bring in visitors, but to maybe uplift our community a little bit. So during that time period, which was November the 29th through January the 3rd, we had 10,000 people come through. We had 3,000 cars, and the donations were up to $10,000 for the 13 nonprofits that were involved in this, that had displays. Next slide, please. And as Diane said, we were trying to focus on the outdoors for our "Visit Rockport Fulton" Facebook page as well, and you can see that we had reached almost 160,000 people with the Fulton Pier. And if you look down, you'll see that there's 777 shares. That means that people that saw it actually shared it on their page as well. So not only were they looking at it, but the friends of their friends, so it just goes on and on and on. Back one more. And so this is just a screenshot of the "Let's Take It Outdoors" press release, and we have this also on the website, and you can share it if you'd like, and then 100 Things to Do. That's just a snippet of both of those.
All right, so now let's take it forward, January, February, and March. What are we planning to do? You know, unique activities coming up for spring break. We're doing the Seabration to show off the Fulton Convention Center, and we're working with the Sesquicentennial Committee to highlight the next, really, six months of all the events and activities to outdoors and things to do to bring to people's attention. We have an eBlast that, I looked at the last eBlast, 5,100 people opened that eBlast, and this is people signing up to receive a tourism newsletter on the Rockport Fulton area. And then we do social media posts for, again, beach, water, Aransas Pathways sites, and we're exploring the possibility of a geocaching tour. I don't know if you're familiar with geocaching. There is, they strategically put one right outside my window. It's a geocache site, and people have to come to the site. They find it online. It's like a scavenger hunt online, and it convinced me that people from all over the world are geocachers. And they, I'll hear a little noise from people and look out the window, and it's families coming to see what's in that geocache site. And we have people from the community that keeps them supplied with things that they get. And so we have about 20 to 25 of these. So you apply to be a geocache site, and you just embellish that, create more, make them better, do a brochure, and then if they do, all of the sites, they get a little coin. So we're looking into doing that as well, since it's all outdoors.
What kind of things do you put in there?
Different people put little journals. They put a little, like, things that you would get from, say, Oriental Trading or something like that. One may be a turtle.
Or little coins.
Yeah. All sorts of things. One is over on Shell Ridge Road. It's a box, and it has all different sets of keys, and it takes you through it, and you have to open, and it's a treasure chest. It's just a fun thing to do. We continue press releases where possible, and the Texas Maritime Museum, we are working with them to make sure that the press releases reach as far as that wonderful exhibit that they're working on. Sandy also works closely with the monthly attractions, making sure that all their press information, all of their hours, everything is promoted out to the community. And we formed a new committee because we have so many venues that have opened up now as to how to go about attracting people during the week at those particular venues. Next slide, or I'll do it. These are just some of the digital ads that we're using. "Plan Your Visit Today" is the theme there. And do you want to tell about the video that you worked on?
So I know that most of you have probably already seen this video, but we promised we'd show it to you, and so we're going to. A lot of you have not only seen the video, but I know several in the room are in the video. And what we did was, we did a lot of research to find out what we needed in our new video. We had meetings, and we also went with our media buyers to find out what types of things they're looking for, what are people coming to our community for. So we incorporated a lot of local talent, so you'll see faces that you recognize, including our Rockport Fulton High School cheerleaders.
And we're going to actually skip the video because it's almost four minutes long.
Yeah, it's about one minute.
So we'll show you a snippet of it in just a second at the commercial. So the next thing we want to show you, this was Saturday morning.
Oh, let's show the video.
Sandy did a Skype interview, if you want to click on that. This was San Antonio. You don't have a hotspot?
Oh, man.
Okay, well, it's Sandy on Skype with Kins TV, Channel 5, and the questions that they asked her, they did give her information ahead of time as to what they were going to ask her, but it was basically, "Hey, guys, have you recovered? If you have, tell us about it, and what can we come and do with the outdoors?" And to stay away from the COVID situation. And she did a really good job doing that, so.
Thank you.
Colin, we can't click on it, and nope, okay.
I don't want to see my face anyway.
And I guess we wouldn't be able to click on the 30-second commercial also, but these are the commercials that we were responding to in terms of the research. So this, the research tells us who wants to, who, when the people are watching it, who's watching it, and how old are they, and what are they wanting to see.
And we did try to incorporate all age groups, from babies to senior adults. So we have pretty much.
Thank you. That last part, didn't it?
Yeah. Was it pointing at you?
The judge was in it.
And local talent, and these are all high school cheerleaders and local people. That's actually Mike Probst on the jet ski.
Who's Mike Probst?
Yeah, he fell off. And that's your quarterly report, and happy to give you more detail if you're interested.
Diane, appreciate all that, and I know some of the stuff that you presented might give somebody the perception that you're getting a lot more money from us than what you are. Can you kind of go over?
Sure.
How much money you actually get from us?
Sure, absolutely. You guys contribute $50,000 to the overall campaign of $440,000. And the campaign is designed to group together, and then we perform the job at hand for the community and get our return on our investment together. So $50,000 from the Commissioners' Court, and we come to you in June with a marketing plan of that, how that is to be spent, and best ways to do that, and then you guys measure, are you getting your return on your investment?
Diane, where do you get your, the other $440? I mean, the other $390?
The city of Rockport contributes $330,000, and the Town of Fulton, we're working with them. It's between $5,000 and $30,000. $360,000.
I think it's important to note that the entire budget goes to marketing.
I just had a question, and I've seen the, I guess, video that showed the local talent. It was very entertaining, very good. One, if we want to see that little 30-second clip, is that on your website? We could just find it there?
Yes, it is.
It is, and you can also find it on the "Visit Rockport Fulton" Facebook.
Okay, and in this, which shows tremendous amount of work, and I appreciate it, but I don't see any information about the visitors. Was there any tabulation done of the visitors for that quarter?
I can send that to you.
Okay, yes, please.
What we do is, we track the visitors coming into the visitor center and their origin, and then we also track the visitors going into the hotels and that number, and then an overall economic impact number.
Okay, and is the visitor center open on Saturdays?
10 to 2, it is.
Okay, so I had heard that it was closed, but I didn't know if that was for the holidays.
We did close in the month, during November and December. The winter Texan activity was little or nothing, walking into the visitor center for those months. It wasn't worth our while to stay open, so we closed for those months. But we're back open now, and we are getting some traction.
Great, thank you.
However, on Saturdays, it is not as busy as we would like for it to be.
Okay, thank you, and again, thank you for what you do. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I would move to approve the report.
I second it.
Second, Commissioner Russo, all those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Discuss approve/disapprove requests of variance on county minimum lot size requirements at 134 and 138 Copeland Ridge Road to allow replat of two and a half lots into two lots. Cat, oh, well, somebody, I guess I just made that motion.
I'm here if anyone has any questions.
Just a minute. I make the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Castorline. Okay, Cat, talk to us about it.
This replat is in order to allow the owner of 138 to rebuild the home that was destroyed by Hurricane Harvey. He is basically buying a 10-foot strip of land from his neighbor in order to upgrade his septic system to be in compliance with the currently adopted standards.
So, Cat, my question, and I looked through this, and thank you for that explanation. So we will, if we approve this, we will grant a variance, but actually, the new lot will be smaller than our minimum size of one-half acre, and that's why you're asking for this variance. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be bigger than it was, but still not as big as we'd like, but this is the best we can do for now.
Correct. The utilities have been verified, so that even though it's a smaller lot, it won't create any environmental issues. The Environmental Health has already reviewed the septic design.
Do you need a motion?
I made the motion. It was second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. All right, county attorneys, item number 14, do I have a motion on that? Consider an action on whether to, it is necessary, designated Martha Luigi Auditorium, which is located within the county seat of Aransas County, 1803 Omahundro, Rockport, Texas, 78382, as an auxiliary courtroom or district court, county court at law, until further notice pursuant to Section 292.001 Texas Local Government Code.
I so move. I second it.
Motion made and submitted. Andy, you want to discuss that with us?
Yes, thank you. I know that Judge Mills already knows, but we've been discussing with the school board presidents and the new superintendent, Mr. Dr. Garcia, to use the high school auditorium to pick juries. So Judge Bianchi and Judge Flanagan are also here. We were able to go and look at the auditorium along with multiple other members of our county, and we made sure it is big enough, and we are able to use it on certain dates that we've already provided to the school so that we can pick juries for both our county court at law and our district court. And we've provided all of those dates. It seems that they are agreeable to let us use it. We will be cleaning and sanitizing it after we use it, and it will be saving the county approximately $50,000 over our last location that was offered to us.
So they're offering it gratis?
We will be paying about $375 a day, but it will not be a monthly lease. It will only be whenever we need to use it, and since our facilities manager is going to be cleaning it for us, we will not be paying an outside company.
And we have security supplied by the sheriff's department.
Yes, the sheriff has agreed to provide security, and for those of you who do not know, the auditorium is not connected to the rest of the high school, so no students will be with our jury pool. They will not be close to where we are, and they will be kept at a safe distance.
There'll be a designated parking area for the jurors, too.
Correct. They have agreed to let us use one of their parking lots just to keep us separated from the high school students, since we all want to look out for everyone's safety.
How many people will you be able to get in there distancing and all that?
At least 100 people, which will be more than enough for pretty much any of our juries that we will need this year.
Is this for six months or indefinite period until we?
It's for an indefinite period. We've supplied them with the dates that we need for the remainder of the year in the event that we need to continue to use it.
Great. I think it sounds like a very good use of local facilities to help out the district judges, and I'm glad you answered the question about the security of the students because that was a concern that was brought to me by some constituents. Thank you.
Yes, and I want to also thank Judge Mills because he did take a lot of time to meet with Dr. Garcia and work this out, and I think that it's very beneficial for the county since none of the money that is allocated to this was in our budget before, so being able to only spend less than $10,000 versus $60,000, I think, is really what is best.
Thank you. Either judge would like to say anything about this? Okay.
Yeah.
Judge Flanagan?
Yeah, first of all, pardon me, dressing down today. I was supposed to be off today, but things don't happen. We were very pleased, thank you, Judge Mills, for laying the groundwork so that we could get this facility. It's the only facility that we felt that we could utilize or had a chance at that would meet the constitutional and statutory requirements of where it would be located and was also plenty big enough so that we can have a jury panel of 120 or more, which is the number that we need for some of our more serious offenses and that are troublesome to get a jury. We do need to have a large jury panel. We've got processes in place so that we can have the jury panel pre-qualified so that we can cut down the number of folks that need to be there present for a jury selection. But it's a Godsend to us because if we didn't have this location, we would be stuck for the next, who knows how many months without being able to have a substantial impact on our jury docket. And so again, thank you, Judge Mills. Thank you for helping us a lot on this, Ms. Oster. She has been kind of the point man between the judges and the administration and the Commissioners' Court, seeing this done so that we can start now having some jury dockets and hopefully having a better impact on the number of folks that are in jail and just generally administration of justice here in Aransas County, something that we've not been able to do. Something that we've not been able to do. We've instituted similar processes throughout the district, and so being able to do that here in Aransas County is something that we're looking forward to as well. You got any questions?
No, thank you.
Yeah, the money that we've saved last year by not having juries, I know it goes back into the general fund, but this is going to be a largely fairly minimal impact on the budget for the district courts, I would think. Certainly a lot less than nine or ten thousand dollars a month. If it's even five hundred dollars, including all of the cleanup expenses and some additional security costs for doing this one day every month or twice a month, is going to be a great benefit to both district courts and the county court at law, being able to move our cases forward, get our business taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Flanagan. Thank you, Amanda. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Discuss, approve, disapprove? All right, somebody-
I move to approve authorizing the county judge to sign as a witness a contract for election services between Aransas County Elections Administrator and the town of Fulton for the joint election to be held on May first, twenty twenty-one.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Castellini.
So this is just a fairly standard contract. I'll be here to answer any questions if you have any.
I just had one question.
Yes.
Other than the duplication was really poor quality? I don't know if that was just a fluke?
It was just, it came to me already in poor quality, and it was being scanned, it made it worse. I do have, the judge does have two copies that I can review that are more clear.
Okay, well, I read it, but it was with difficulty. My only question is on the easy vote estimate that she received? The fifteen hundred for the absentee and then the five hundred for the training, but then we received an adjustment of five hundred credit?
Well, that item was removed from the agenda, because it's already within budget.
Okay.
I'm eliminating current software program that we have that's going to be the same cost in replacing it with this one.
So we don't need the training implementation?
No.
All right, thank you.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen, do I have a motion?
I move to-
Authorizing the county judge to sign a proposal for York Bridge Company to repair the Tule Creek footbridge at a cost of twenty-seven thousand dollars to the county, sixteen thousand dollars for labor, eleven thousand for materials to upgrade the compass to decking and rail cap.
Okay.
Any questions?
Motion made.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Lombard. Go ahead, discuss. Let's talk about it.
Yes. Last, last fall, we did an inspection of the bridge. We were getting ready to stain it, replace some boards that had rotted, and we noticed that one of the girders on the bridge had a rot hole in it about that big, and it was about four or five inches deep. That's one of the big main girders that crosses over the creek. So we, we, we called York Bridge, notified the steering committee, we called York Bridge. York Bridge took some time to come back to us, but they're going to provide the materials, they're going to provide the material, they're going to provide the machinery, and because we're out of warranty, we're providing the labor. We upgraded to a, what they call a composite material, it's a commercial composite decking material that will, won't wear out, like a Trex or a, or a other type of products like that, but it's going to be a composite material, and we're going to do the decking on the bridge, and we're going to do the top rail caps on the bridge with this composite material, and that's why we have an eleven thousand dollar up cost.
John, are you doing anything to try to keep the, the main beams that you have under there that are bad?
Yes.
Are they doing anything to try to keep this from happening this week again?
They were, they were upset that the material failed. It's a pressure-treated material. Pressure-treated lumber is no longer like it used to be. They changed it about ten years ago, and it doesn't last like it did, but they, they were upset that this product failed, so they'll be coming back with a different product. What I ought to ask them is, is, maybe we'll put like a epoxy resin on top of that before we put the, put the plate, the decking down on it. But it was about that big, in a big girder like that, it's, it's not a safety factor right now, but if it was left unchecked, we would have a real problem.
Know something like laminated plywood or what they're made out of?
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a pressure-treated lumber, but because of the depth of it, these girder beams are at least two feet thick. They're, they're, they're composite, they're glued together in a ganglam, they call it.
I have my usual question, is this, you have the money in budget already?
Sure, it's all venue tax funded.
John, what will the warranty be on this new material? Because the last time it was a three-year warranty?
It, it, that'll probably, and the material will probably be the same. I haven't, I have, I can go back and come back to you with that.
I'm just hoping, if we get the upgraded material, that the warranty might be a little bit longer?
Well, the upgraded material's the last fifty years. It's, it's like, it's a composite-type material, as you see now, that a lot of decks are being made out of, but this is a commercial application. This is not Trex or AZAC or other products like that. Did you buy it at Home Depot and Pro-Belt and stuff like that?
Okay. And where it shows what the insurance coverage limits are, those are what the county requires, I'm sure.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Discuss, approve, disapprove, authorizing county judge to sign a contract with J.M. Davidson, L.T.D., for Regent Cedar Bio and Vincent Slue. As everybody knows, this is one of mine, so I make the motion.
Second.
What's the, what's the dollar impact on this one?
There's no dollar impact to the county. All right, we have general, Judge Mills has had a savings set up for this.
Okay.
Can you break down the cost, though? What's the-
Didn't bring it with me, it was in the last one, but roughly, the, the whole project's coming in at six point nine million. The FEMA grant is six point four. There's a, there's a five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar, what they call local match, in which the state picks up seventy-five percent of that. So the county's proportion of the, of the five hundred and seventy-three is twenty-five percent, which is roughly a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars.
And that money came, comes out of the fund that we established a few years ago-
Correct.
-that comes from hot funds.
Right.
Excess annual.
Yes. And, and, this is, this is a follow-up from last week's meeting, last Commissioners' Court, where we presented it. It's just thorough contract and all the detail, which has been checked out.
Any questions? Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Discuss, approve, disapprove, adopting Aransas County Fund Balance Policy. Go ahead, Jackie, you're up for a while now, aren't you? Pardon?
Eighteen, the EDA, the EDA grant.
Let's get to eighteen. Wow, and a big one. All right, do I have a motion?
Move to, move for acceptance of the one point seven million dollar Economic Development Administration grant with a total project cost of two million one hundred thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars for workforce development and entrepreneurship center, matching funds provided by the public and private sector, cash, in-kind and workforce accounting donated in the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars, and authorizing the county judge to sign the financial assistance award form and any related documents.
Motion made, do I have a second?
I'm supposed to speak on it?
Well, I gotta get a second before that, ma'am. I'll second it. Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms.
County Commissioners, Judge Mills, this motion is to authorize the judge to accept the grant for the Workforce Development Center and to authorize the judge to sign a financial assistance award form and any other related documents. Commissioners, have you seen these documents? Have you read the grant? Do you know what's in it? Do you know how this Workforce Development Center will be paid for once constructed? Anyone can construct an educational center with grant money and matching donation funds, but it looks like we're going to be asked to financial, provide financial assistance for attendance for students that would go here. We don't know, because we haven't seen this form. There's been no transparency in this process, much like other grants, if the Commissioners were not given this grant and the full budget for sustaining this project ahead of time, including this financial assistance award form. This project has gone back and forth for a long time. I'm looking at an old budget that says the operational cost are one point four five million dollars, happens to actually coincidentally agree with the tuition revenue. We're supposed to have eight hundred students a year in the first year. That would be around nine hundred dollars a class, and the classes could be two weeks or three weeks, or, and then we're expected to go up to eighteen hundred students. I'm looking at the grant, because I asked for it through public information, but have the Commissioners seen it? Are you willing to vote for something that you don't know how we're going to pay for in the long run? It says that the county will be responsible for the ownership of the facility, the land, the long-term capital maintenance and replacement, and the partnership on this project with Delmar. The EDC and the Chamber of Commerce will be the liaisons and the leaders in this project. Are we going to turn everything over to them without input from Commissioners and taxpayers? And also, Delmar states specifically that their average taxpayer taxable property or income from taxable property is fifty, over fifty percent of how they operate. Only twenty percent comes from their tuition. Are we heading into a junior college district if we are required to keep this open, because we applied for a grant, we've accepted it, and we've given the judge authority to make all these decisions without Commissioner and taxpayer input? Is that where we're headed? Because Delmar's past performance is that only twenty-something percent is, of their cost is paid for with tuition. But here we are, in this resolution or in this item, being asked to provide a financial assistance award form, and I'm asking you Commissioners, if you haven't seen this form, if you don't know what you're signing us up for, table this item and make sure you get the documents first. I recall the previous grant application where Ms. Fouts did not allow public information on these grant applications for the general land office, and so nobody had any idea how other projects and that would be paid for and what were the taxpayer shares. It's incumbent upon you, as our representatives, to find out what the full taxpayer share is and what the, the long-term sustainability is of this project before you accept this grant, because it's not just about constructing a building, it's about what is going to impact us if this idea of having eight hundred to eighteen hundred students in the, you know, first few years is, is really hard to understand. The grant application says it's going to pull students from outside of the area. I really don't see students coming from Portland to come over here to twenty-room classes. And also, this favors the art community, because it talks about, the goal is to have Makerspace and art entrepreneur classes. And honestly, I don't think taxpayers here really should be on the hook for paying for art classes and for teaching artists how to upskill and have new technology. It says, "This project builds on a previous EDA grant that funded the reconstruction of Rockport Center for the Arts. To complement this new art center, this project includes Makerspace. The facility will serve as a platform to upskill artisans and other residents with entrepreneurship, technological, and craft skills." Honestly, we don't need to be on the hook for financial assistance for artists. We just voted against tax abatements for art. You know, our population, according to this grant, earns on average forty-eight, forty-four thousand dollars a year, which is fifteen thousand dollars a year below the national average, and we're currently at nine percent unemployment. Our population is in decline, according to this grant application. So how do you expect a population of this type to fund financial assistance? What does this mean? So please, Commissioners, table this item until you get all the details and make them available to the public, and we have an opportunity for input. Signing us up for grants just because they're available and not understanding the taxpayer share in the long run is irresponsible, and it's also not providing for transparency or sustainability of your current residents. I understand the idea is to have people make more money, but in the meantime, we don't need to pay for it while we're in unemployment, you know, at nine percent and fifteen thousand against the, or below the national average in average income. We don't need to pay for art classes and financial assistance. So please, read the details before you vote on this and ask for a table until you get all the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fouts, are you online?
I'm sorry, Judge. Just for the record, can we say the last woman who spoke's name?
Her name was Ms. Rutledge.
Kristy Rutledge.
Christine.
Thank you very much.
Kristy.
Thank you.
Rutledge.
Ms. Fouts?
Hi, yes, sir, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to present the item. In July of last, we came to the Commissioners' Court, I believe we came on a couple of different occasions, made multiple presentations on the scope and breadth of the project and how it would work, including what educational program is available. And in this case, it is, we're starting out with some general programming, but it will be a community partnership to continue to decide what types of programs are offered through the Workforce Development Center, as well as adjustments have to be made as the market changes and as in-demand jobs change. It is a partnership with Delmar, and they, we already have an MOU with them for operation of the facility. In July, we actually received a resolution from the Commissioners' Court. It was R. twenty-six dash twenty twenty that approved submission of the grant to, it's to the Economic Development Administration. And we came back a couple of times in August with a resubmitment that basically halved the request that we were asking for, as well as we brought forth all of the letters of commitment for matching funds from the private sector. We have now recently received notification of the grant award. The total amount has been revised by the EDA. It's approximately now two point, two million one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars is the total project cost, with the grant amount being one point seven million, and the matching funds coming from the private donation commitment. The original resolution that was passed by the Commissioners' Court did provide for us to, for the judge to be able to sign all documents for application. It also authorized what we're talking about today, which was for acceptance. However, some of the dialogue, I went back and looked at the minutes of the meeting, and one of the Commissioners asked that we bring this back to that when the grant award was received, and that's why we're bringing it back today. So basically, it's a reauthorization of what's already been presented to the court. The document in question for acceptance was in your packet, as well as an overview and background, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Kim, can you give us an overview of county responsibility as far as maintenance and, and operations of the facility?
Sure. The MOU that we have with Delmar calls for, they will be running all operations and maintenance of the facility. The county would be responsible for any major, major, long-term capital, such as your HVAC and, and roof. The facility that we're acquiring through this grant has a brand-new roof and HVAC that was done after the storm, as well as any additional improvements that have to be made will all come through the grant that we would be receiving.
Any other questions?
I have not so much a question as repeating what I said last fall, which was that I am no longer in a position to vote to approve these grants until I can be assured of receiving copies of the grant proposals themselves. And nothing's changed on that front, so nothing has changed in my position. I also moved to table on the same grounds that Ms. Etheridge laid out.
I have.
I already have a motion on the table.
You can always move to table. A motion, even if it's pending.
All right. Make the motion then.
I did. I moved to table.
I have a second. Motion dies for lack of second.
I have a question or two.
Yes, sir.
So I noticed that, and I was in the meetings when this was discussed previously, and I know that some information was given, but it was really given in an overview, it was not given in any kind of detail, and then I didn't find any supporting documents that provided the detail. So as to the question of the suppliers for the co-match funds, I did not find in the packet today a list of those suppliers, and I would be very interested in seeing that. And I also am curious, if the pledges aren't honored, how is that money replaced for the county's match?
So the, all of the commitment letters are with the county judge's office, and that has been available for several months now, and was, we presented that at the last meeting, which was in August. If the, for any reason, the funds don't come in as committed, and these are official commitments, they're just not letters, they're real commitment letters, and we were required to do that for the grant, then we would go out and do additional fundraising needed to meet those requirements.
And I notice also that the August 24, 2020 meeting said the court approved the resubmitment of the application at the $2,193,652, amount, of which the anticipation of the grant value was to be $1,754,921. When it finally came through, that amount had been reduced, apparently by the awardeur, by $55,000. Do you know the rationale for that reduction?
No, that is been my experience with all the EDA grants that I've received. They do not, they did not provide any correspondence regarding the reduction. That is a determinations that's made by the committee that reviews it, as well as the staff. And we work that out with them. After the award happens, then there's a meeting that's held to work through the specifics and execution of the grant.
And one last observation, and perhaps this was just put in here for discussion purposes, but the financial assistance award form CD 450 that came from the Department of Commerce, I noticed that it has the printed name, printed title, and then space for the signature of authorized recipient official, and it has your name and your title. And my understanding is basically the county judge is the signer for contracts.
On the contract this Monday.
That's correct, and he will be signing it. I'm the authorized representative authorized to submit the application, and that's why they put that in there, but the judge would be signing it, and that's why the agenda is worded that way.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Against?
No.
Aye. I'm against.
Okay. Oh. We have a tie because table it and come back. So, a motion to table?
Move to table.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Discuss approve, disapprove, adopting Aransas County Fund Balance Policy.
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, this is a policy that we do review annually, and we do not propose any changes.
I move to adopt Aransas County Footbal, Footbal, Fund Balance Policy as submitted by County Auditor Jackie Cockram.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Discuss approve, disapprove, adopting Aransas County Cash Handling Policy.
Again, this one is another policy that we review annually, and there are no changes proposed. This one, we do provide to all the departments so that they have proper cash handling policies.
I move to adopt the Aransas County Cash Handling Policy as submitted by County Auditor Jackie Cockram.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss approve, disapprove, adopting Aransas County Fraud Prevention and Detention Policy.
Again, this is another one that we just review annually, and we are not proposing any changes at this time.
I move to adopt the Aransas County Fraud Prevention and Detection Policy as submitted by County Auditor Jackie Cockram.
Motion made.
I second it. I would commend Mrs. Cockram and her staff. These are really exceptionally well-written policies.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to adopt the Aransas County Fixed Asset Methodology Policy as submitted by County Auditor Jackie Cockram.
I second it.
Second, Commissioner Russo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 21.
I move to adopt the Aransas County Financial Procedure Policy for 2021 as submitted by County Auditor Jackie Cockram.
I do have a change on this one.
Motion made and seconded with a change.
GLO requires that we turn around funds within three days as opposed to the other grants, so we did make a change to this one to, to make sure that we follow the GLO guidelines.
Make that motion with the change.
It's in this policy, correct?
You're just explaining that I have one's not the same as last year exactly.
I have two questions.
Right.
Under the procedure for the grants payment in Section 3, and I know you and I had talked about that change for the TDA grants versus GLO grants, I'm just curious, are the vendors paid before the work is done, or is the county reimbursed by the grant funds afterwards?
On these, it is a reimbursement, and what we do is we will receive the invoice, we will cut the check and then hold it, and as soon as the, the funds have been received, then we will release the check.
Thank you. And then, under the advanced payment procedures, is there a separate account set up for each grant?
Yes, we do have, not a bank account, but we do in our books.
In the chart of accounts?
Control everything in the chart of accounts. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. 24. Motion.
I move to approve the policy setting, setting a new governmental accounting standards board, ESAB 34, or uncollectible receivables, as submitted by County Auditor Jackie Cockram.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Laubach, all those in favor?
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
Yeah?
Yes.
Perhaps because I'm new, but under the district court, the percent uncollectible that you have, could you explain that? Those are high percentages.
Yes, yes, ma'am. These are just guidelines that were recommended by our outside auditors, and they also require this policy. We used with percentages based on calculations with them.
So it looks like a lot of the taxes that you would expect to come through the district court's office probably won't be paid? I mean, slightly over 50% are paid because it shows 45% uncollectible?
As years go by, it's unfortunate, but yes, ma'am.
The percentages are usually based on how old the fine is, and, you know, because the older they get, they are more uncollectible.
Right.
And that's, that's one of the criteria that's used in creating those percentages.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Discuss approve, disapprove, budget line item transfers.
We have none at this meeting, but next meeting you will be receiving them so we can have 2020's budget.
I move to approve the budget line item transfers and amendments for the period as needed.
Motion made.
A second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Disapprove accounts, accounts, payroll and payroll liabilities.
You have them before you. I will note that there's two checks that were done. For $500,000 apiece, which totals $1 million. Those were actually moved out of the operating funds and into the investments, so they show as a draw on cash, but we have been moved. Have moved them into investments. Ms. Cartwright has. So, other than that, they're pretty normal expenditures.
Move to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Laubach, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, now we're moving into where any elected official or department head can speak now, and I believe Ms. Laubach has a letter she must read.
Right, this is the other half of the message from Kathy Kane. Commissioners and Judge Mills, I would like to address the situation we are experiencing in this county related to the distribution of the COVID vaccine. We are a relatively small county and should be able to come up with a solution that fairly addresses how to distribute this vaccine in the prescribed order of neediest first. The recommendation to call numerous sites every day to try to get your name on the list is inefficient and frustrating, especially to our at-risk 1B residents. My mother falls into that category, and she is frustrated with the process and has decided to stop trying. It is your responsibility to protect the resident's health, and this falls within your purview. Give us one place to register. Have the suppliers come to this one list to select the recipients. Let them call the list and make the appointments. By having everyone on one list, we will be able to administer to the neediest people first before giving the vaccine to 1C and the general population. Going forward with a haphazard approach is not acceptable leadership, and that's the end.
All right. In answer to that and some other thing, the vaccine notification was 24 hours before we, we got 24 hours to set it up and have a plan of action. Aransas County had nothing to do with the list. I personally went to Corpus Christi, or New Haysis County and got my shot, so there was no favoritism. Yeah, somebody, I don't, can't even remember whose, there was a call asking for all the people that worked for Aransas County, and I think they did the City of Rockport and Navigation District. I have no idea who was called, but I know all of Aransas County employees were not vaccinated in this recent vaccination endeavor. As far as me going to someone's door and inviting them to go get a shot, the man was on television, venting his frustrations about going to Robstown with him and his wife at 4:30 in the morning. I asked that he be put on the waitlist if there was an opening. There was, they couldn't get ahold of him. They called me, said, "Do you know this man?" I said, "Well, I can find him." So I, yes, I went to his house and knocked on his door and said, "If you want that shot, you and your wife, you need to get down there." That's the end of my statement. Anyone else? If not, do I have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right now, we have another meeting started, it should have started three minutes ago, but, all right, it's a, it's a call meeting, special meeting, it's item for deliberation. Do I have a motion? Motion made.
This is a, this is a motion to approve an authorization for Judge Mills to sign a FEMA policy, building code, and floodplain management administration and enforcement document. Could we get a quick statement from David Reed about what this document's about? And I'll, I'll, I take that as Commissioner Castorline's motion, but I second.
All right. Okay, so FEMA has changed their rules that they will, they will reimburse for building code administration expenses, code enforcement, floodplain management, and substantial damage determinations. Were not an eligible expense moving forward, they will be, but we have to opt into that.
So I'm not, I'm not sure I'm still quite getting what used to not to be reimbursable and now is. Could you give us like an example of a type of expense?
Yes, substantial damage determination. After Harvey, we had volunteers that came in and helped do that. We may not have had volunteers. We may have had to.
So like an administrative, administrative cost or the cost of hiring somebody to, to evaluate damage?
Right.
Basically admin costs, then it sounds like.
And, and I'm not saying that we will have these expenses next time, but if we do have them, then if we vote to have documents signed, we'll be able to get reimbursed.
Besides general admin kind of costs, can you think of another example, or is that pretty much it?
I really can't think of another cost. I mean, I'm sure there's others as situations arise.
And just to confirm, there's nothing about this change that alters any Aransas County citizens' obligations to how to comply with the floodplain management order? This is strictly a way of us maybe getting reimbursed for maybe expenses we will have?
Correct.
May I add something?
Sure.
This does go back to Hurricane Harvey, so we can go back and get those expenses.
There is, there is that option. I, I wasn't thinking we'd want to try to do that.
Well, the only thing I'm thinking is that we did hire, didn't you hire some additional employees right after that to help take care of some stuff and some?
Yeah, that was, that was already paid for by other.
Okay. But it does give us the option to go back and, and do all the way to Harvey if we did find out that there were some expenses that we could.
And, and the document that's needs to be signed is the same one either way that we want to do.
No, this, this will, will take us back all the way to Harvey.
All right, any other discussion?
Does entering this agreement, what? Sorry. Does entering this agreement cost anything?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Do I have another motion?
Move to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good day.